We ask that you stand for the pledge of American legion flag, pledge of allegiance of the American flag and remain standing for our invocation.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we come as homeless, we know how tonight, Lord. First, we want to give you the honor, give you the glory for being God all by yourself. We thank you, oh Lord, for being so good to each and every one of us. Thank you for the opportunity to serve in the capacity that we in, as that you'll guide us, oh Lord, as we make decisions concerning this city. We thank you, oh Lord, for your sunshine, we thank you for the rain, and we thank you, oh Lord, for your love and care, that you will give us just what we need. And we pray, oh Lord, that all will be well with those who are having more severe weather. Be with us, oh Lord, as we travel back to our destinations, and we give you the glory and honor and praise. In your name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, we call a roll, please.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
I call this private city council meeting to order. Character trait of the money is attentiveness, concentrating on the person or task before us, being attentive. Approval of the minutes from city council meeting, January nineteenth, twenty sixteen. Do we have a motion, please? We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approval, signify by raising your right hand. And those minutes have been approved. At this time, we have comments from person present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone who wishes to speak on any item on this night's agenda, please raise your hand. Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, sir. For the light, I have to point at Kirkus.
Yes.
I think it's the first time this year, isn't it? But I'd like to turn the microphone over to Mr. Jim Marshall, please.
Hi. I'm here. I'm carrying a lot of stuff. This is going to take too long.
Yeah, they normally only give me sixty seconds, so.
I will see what I can do.
Okay.
As y'all will recall, Jackson Thornton was hired to conduct a cost of service study on sewer department, looking at fiscal year twenty fourteen information with the idea of, my opinion, of getting it taken where we are now, knowing that we have some, I'll say substantial infrastructure improvements coming down the line here in the next few years. I want to make sure that the system itself is in solid shape to take on the, take on the additional debt service needs associated with the project. So with that in mind, I've got a brief little handout that sums up about sixty pages of report. I thought this would be a more tolerable way to, to go about doing it. We've had several meetings with management and the wastewater committee over the last several months and have looked at this in great detail. We have nine, ten pages of information. I'll be real brief on the first two, kind of sets the stage on what we've done and why we've done it. In doing a rate study, we're looking at the cash needs of the system itself. Is the system bringing in enough money to fund its operations, to meet that service, and to fund capital investments? All right. With the tenant, to make sure that the rates are fair and equitable, meaning that everybody's paying their fair share, nothing more, nothing less. This is the vision of the city government and enterprise fund. It's not a, there's no profit motive. It's a, it's a capital intensive process. So it doesn't mean it's cheap. It takes money and proper financial management, which in doing this report, just real quick, we'll look at one comparison. We lasted this report for y'all in two thousand and ten. Again, fast-forwarding four years later, operations and maintenance expense to the, to the credit of city staff actually went down over that four-year period. Went down by about fifteen thousand dollars from two points three seven million to two point three six. So a net difference of fifteen thousand, that doesn't happen. We work with over a hundred utilities across the southeast, and over that long of a period of time, very rarely do you see expenses actually going down. That, that benefits your rate payers, that benefits your constituents. So it's very prudent planning and process-driven reliabilities and efficiencies that have y'all in a solid position that y'all are in today. Y'all are on a great, great financial footing that's allowing y'all to consider investing a significant amount of money in improving and upgrading the treatment plant. Circling back to this page two, real quick, keeping in mind, you want your rates to be simple and affordable. And I, and I think with, in working with staff and, and the wastewater committee, that the rate suggestions that we have here are tolerable, given the amount of improvement that y'all are looking at doing. Based off the information we have, the current investment in plant is fifteen million dollars in round numbers over the life of the system itself. And you're looking at making, in round numbers, a twenty-five million dollar investment over the next four or five years. So you're more than doubling your facility, your investment in your facility. And to be able to do that, there, there will be rate increases, not hiding that at all, but they're going to be very manageable, very manageable, and truthfully, still, in comparing, in comparing y'all to, to outlying utilities, surrounding utilities, still very affordable. And back to your sixty seconds, I will, we'll skip through the overview of the process and just jump right into it. Looking here on slide four, page four, we're looking at the cash needs of the wastewater system. So operations and maintenance expense of that two point three six million, debt service, which includes a principal and interest of just under, just over one point three million. You'll see the footnote at the bottom, that includes one point two million dollars of estimated annual debt service that's not yet on the books. The potential borrowing to fund the sewer expansion and rehab, rate-funded capital, that, that's continuing capital improvements on the collection system generally, and that's the, the three-year average spend in twelve, thirteen, and fourteen that's provided by staff. So the total revenue requirement of four point six million, from that, we're able to, to back off other revenue, that's interest income, late payments, things of that nature, anything, any revenue that the, that the enterprise fund receives from anything other than collecting sewer. So the rates to fund this new debt service would need to generate four point six million dollars. Moving on to slide five, just to give you an idea, fifty-one cents of every dollar coming in is to fund O and M. Twenty cents of every dollar is reinvested directly into the system in capital improvement. Twenty-nine cents of every dollar goes, goes to debt service. Again, the vast majority of that is the one point two million dollars that does not yet exist, but y'all are in a position to plan for. So it, it's what we're talking about, what we'll get to in a moment, is, instead of having a one point two million dollar rate increase over a one-year period and causing to some degree a certain amount of rate shock, let's ease into it. We know it's coming. We know about what it's going to cost based off current estimates, so let's take measured steps to ease the financial burden of the rate payers. Slide six, revenue requirement by rate class. We have the total system need of just over four point five million. There on the left-hand column, then going left to right, you have residential inside, residential out, commercial in and out, and then industrial. What this tells me is, as a rate analyst, there are two rate classes that really drive your expenses. We could quadruple the industrial rate, and it's such a small group of customers that use the system so little compared to the vast majority being residential, that it wouldn't aid the financial viability, financial stability of the utility. So it, it's, they're really, the residential inside, commercial inside, as you know, are the two key drivers to, to your revenue requirement, causing you to incur your expenses. Slide seven, recovery by rate class. Again, we needed, right at four point six million in round numbers, we'll rate revenue for fiscal year fourteen. Down at the bottom left is three point six million. So we're a little over a million dollars short of where we need to be for the system. That represents, on the left-hand side, seventy-eight percent. We're getting seventy-eight cents of every dollar we need, assuming that debt comes on in an additional one point two million dollars a year. And then going left to right, we have seventy-nine percent, eighty-four, and then on out, on out, on out to the industrial there at seventy-two. So how can we begin to close that gap? That, that's, that's not as big a gap as I've seen, given the amount of investment that, that y'all are, have decided or are in the process of deciding to make. But it's, it's not unattainable by any stretch. And, and working diligently with, with the wastewater committee and staff, we have a recommendation for y'all to consider going to slide eight. And this would apply to every rate class, whether they're inside or outside, commercial or industrial. And you can see here, the annual rate adjustment years one, two, three, four, and five. So it's a five-year plan of rate adjustments, easing in to be able to carry the full burden of that debt service. We have, we're going up, would like for you to consider going up a dollar a month on the customer charge. So that over the five-year period at full implementation, that's a five-dollar increase relative to where you are now. Along with that, a volumetric increase of, of a decline and increase structure, if you will, of twenty-five cents per thousand gallons treated in year one, twenty year two, down to a positive increase in year five, over the five-year period, that would increase the revenue per, rate per thousand gallons by seventy-five cents. The amount of revenue that brings in on the customer charge, going up a, a dollar a month, would bring in six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year. The volumetric increase would bring in a total of, based off twenty-fourteen billing statistics, let me be very clear about this, twenty-fourteen billing statistics and consumption patterns, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in year one, and then declining down to, to a forty thousand dollar, forty-three thousand dollar increase in year five. So a total of six fifty there, combining the two columns, we're one million two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Question probably is, well, where if we're a million dollars short, why are we looking to fund one point two? Well, there's a phase two coming at some point that's going to come, come behind phase one of this, of the capital infrastructure improvement plan. And that will allow y'all to stay on very solid footing as, as we, as phase two is considered and begun, and, and it is outside, well outside of my scope of, of knowledge and scope of the engagement as to, as to what exactly is, will be called on there. Moving to slide nine and ten, I do want to show you the impact. And these are the last two slides. I know I'm over my sixty seconds. But the, the cost of service rate relative to, to the study for the residential inside class, right now, it's thirteen eighty, thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents a month before y'all collect any sewer from them. And then two dollars and ninety-nine cents for every thousand gallons collected. And again, this is residential inside only, but, but I thought this would be a good illustration. At the full five-year implementation, your current rate of eleven dollars per month would increase by five dollars, obviously, to sixteen. And then the two fifty-five up to three thirty. The blue line, right in the middle, is your, is representative of that cost of service, that thirteen eighty-four and the two ninety-nine. The, the red rate is where you currently are relative to your cost of service. The fact that we're under the blue line is indicative of a seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent recovery. We never, we never cross over, we never, we never begin to, to collect what we need. This plan certainly does that. It would generate the, the money you need. And then behind that, on page ten, it gets away from the visual and provides the data points, really, that support the, the rate change as we look to, as we look to not only fully fund phase one and the debt service associated with it, but also looking, knowing that there's a phase two of some sort, another significant investment looming in the not-too-distant future. Right now, a, a five-thousand gallon customer is about your average customer. That's, I have a wife and two young boys at home. We're probably about your average customer. And I currently pay y'all twenty-three dollars and se, somebody in that situation currently pays twenty-three seventy-five. It's costing you twenty-nine. That's that, again, that shortfall. So they're paying you seventy-nine cents a day right now to be able to flush their toilet and not worry about it. Seventy-nine cents a day, just taking that twenty-three seventy-five and dividing it by thirty days in a given month. That's a heck of a deal. That's cheap. And it's a heck of a valuable service, y'all, providing it's seventy-nine cent, you're collecting seventy-nine cents a day, need to be collecting a little bit more. And at full implementation of this, that seventy-nine cents a day becomes a dollar and eight cents, and you've more than doubled your investment in your facilities. That's, that's a, sounds like a pretty big step, going from, from seventy-nine cents to a dollar and eight cents, but that's being done over a five-year period, and you're more than doubling the investment in your infrastructure. And be able to do that for thirty cents, thirty cent increase on the, on the rates per day is, is pretty shocking. It, it's a testament, again, I, I, one of the first things I talked about was cost control. It's, I don't think it's an expense issue. It's, it's a revenue issue. And, and I think this, this action, if y'all want to prove it, would go to a long way in, in being able to continue to reindust on the city and reindust in the sewer's infrastructure. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Counselor Bowles.
Just one question. On the rate increase at a dollar to the consumer, is that a dollar to the businesses also?
Yes.
So it's a dollar across the board for everybody?
Inside, outside, commercial, industrial, residential. What you see on page seven, I believe, to the rate plan, excuse me, sub, page eight, goes to every single customer of Prattville Wastewater.
And have y'all calculated on apartments? Because you'll have three hundred people living in one apartment, and they're paying one sewer rate. Have we looked at, maybe seen if we could adjust their rate properly?
But they'd be considered one bill.
So they'd be increased one dollar?
Plus the, plus the, plus the consumption.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that.
Sure.
There's a lot of hard work going in there. And while we're just talking wastewater, again, I want to thank the wastewater committee for all the work that they've done, and the wastewater department and everybody that's been involved. And we still trying to get there, and we trying to do it as, in the most reasonable manner, but yet to get the service that we need. Mayor, that's the end of your report?
That's just.
Oh, you do, you have a report, I'm sorry.
And I'd actually like to piggyback off of some of your comments there. I'd like to thank this council, thank the, the committee, that, the wastewater committee, and also Dale Gandy, our public works director, Rick Teague, and also, um, I'm going to bring Sam Russell. Thank you. I almost forgot about Sam's name. But without all their due diligence and, and hard work, some of this report would not be, you know, it is shockingly surprising how much we've been able to hold our costs down just because of their hard work and the fact that this council's been able to give them the tools to work with. But just moving right on, along, Mr. President, on tonight's agenda, currently, we're expensing roughly three hundred gallons of groundwater infiltration on Allenville Road. This is approximately seven times more than it should be. The project in resolution two will rectify the situation, so please move forward on this item, which is still another way of us being in proactive mode to help keep our costs down. Because as all this water, you know, we have actually had a lot of rain right recently, that rainwater is being treated that you and I and everybody else is having to pay, pay for. So this is just another way of helping us, uh, uh, keep our costs down on that. We are a mechanized service waring organization. With that in mind, I appreciate council approving the projects and equipment that made us efficient and effective and while keeping our operating costs down. We're celebrating Monte Grado this Saturday downtown. The event begins at eleven AM with vendors and attraction. The parade kicks off at one PM at the courthouse, and hope that everybody will, will be there to see it all happen. Mr. President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to our agenda. We do have a consent agenda tonight. We have four items to consider on the consent agenda. Number one is a resolution to grant a restaurant retail license to El Sombrero Mexican Restaurant LLC doing business as El Sombrero Mexican Restaurant. Item number two is a resolution to grant a lounge retail liquor class two package store license to Soul Net LLC doing business as Soul Net Package Store. Number three is a resolution to surplus two vehicles and various equipment from the police department. And resolution number four is to surplus various equipment from the information technology department. Do we have a motion to place these four items on a consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. It'd be in a discussion. All in favor of placing these items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And the consent agenda has been adopted. We have, do we have a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
So moved.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We've been in a discussion on adopting these four items now. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And the consent agenda has been adopted. We'll move further into the agenda now. Resolution number one is to award bid number zero one six dash zero zero three to Long Lewis Ford for the purchase of one twenty-sixteen expedition four-by-two XL vehicle for the building department at a cost of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Whereas City of Prattville Building Department has a need of one two thousand sixteen expedition four-by-two L XL vehicle, and whereas five bids were let for the building department for said vehicle, and whereas three sale bids were received, open and read in public on January twenty-six, two thousand sixteen, and whereas Long Lewis Ford was the lowest responsible bidder at the cost of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Whereas said vehicle is a budget expense for the building department. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of City of Prattville hereby award bid number zero one six dash zero zero three in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars to Long Lewis Ford for one two thousand sixteen expedition four-by-two XL vehicle, and said funds are approved and appropriated from FY two thousand sixteen budget line item building department slash capital outlay. So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Number two is a resolution to enter into an agreement with Gulf Coast Underground to reline sewer line on Allenville Road for the wastewater department at a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has identified a need to reline approximately one thousand four hundred and sixty feet of sewer line on Allenville Road. And whereas Gulf Ca, Cost Underground has the expertise to complete said project at a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. Whereas said project is a budget expense for the wastewater department. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into an agreement with Gulf Coast Underground to reline said sewer line on Allenville Road at a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety dollars, and said funds are approved and appropriated from FY two thousand sixteen wastewater enterprise fund capital outlay. Be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized and empowered to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed far and on behalf of the City of Prattville. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution is adopted. Resolution number three is to release funds for the purchase of one cargo trailer from TNT Outfitters for the wastewater department at a cost not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need for one eight and a half by twenty-four foot cargo trailer to be utilized as an education trailer in the wastewater department. And whereas said trailer is available from TNT Outfitters at a cost of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And whereas said trailer is a budgeted expense for the wastewater department. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to TNT Outfitters, and funds are approved and appropriated from FY two thousand sixteen budget line item wastewater enterprise fund capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Item number four is a resolution to release funds to purchase one two thousand sixteen Ford F two fifty super crew four-by-four vehicle through state contract T one nine one A from Stivers Ford for the police department at a cost of twenty-seven thousand forty-four dollars. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the police department traffic unit has a need for one two thousand sixteen Ford F two fifty super crew four-by-four vehicle. Whereas said vehicle is available through the state contract T one nine one A, contract four zero one two four one zero, line number twenty-three from Stivers Ford at a cost of twenty-seven thousand forty-four dollars. And whereas said vehicle is a budget expense for the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount of twenty-seven thousand forty-four dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Stivers Ford, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget line item police department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand. And this item has been adopted. Number five is a resolution also to release funds to purchase one MT eighty-five mini tractor load, loader through NJPA contract number zero four two eight one five dash CEC from Cap, Trip, Capital Tractor Incorporated for the urban management department at a cost of forty thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. Counselor Whiteside, will you read it, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the urban management department has a need for one MT eighty-five mini track loader, and whereas said loader is available through NJPA contract number zero four two eight one five dash CEC from Capital Tractor, Inc., at a cost of forty thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. And whereas said loader is budgeted expense for the urban management department, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that the funds in the amount of forty thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty cents are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Capital Tractor, Inc., or Bobcat Company, and said funds are approved and appropriated for fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget line item urban management department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Item number six is a resolution to release funds to purchase two tool cap fifty-six hundred G series right-of-way cutting machines through NJPA contract number zero four two eight one five dash CEC from Capital Tractor, Incorporated for the urban management department at a cost of ninety-nine thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the urban management department has a need for two tool cap fifty-six hundred G series right-of-way cutting machines, and whereas said cutting machines are available through NJPA contract number zero four two eight one five dash CEC from Capital Tractor, Incorporated, at a cost of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-six cents each. And whereas said cutting machines are a budgeted expense for the urban management department. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that funds in the amount of ninety-nine thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and twelve cents are hereby approved, authorized and approved to be paid to Capital Tractor, Incorporated, or Bobcat Company, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget line item urban management department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Number seven is a resolution to set a public hearing to zone portions of property known as the ridge at Pratt Farms to R three single-family residential and to rezonate the remaining portions of said property from FAR Forest Agriculture and Recreation to R three single-family residential. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas David and Larry Avent are the owners of the property described in attachment A and shown in attachment B. And whereas portions of the property to be zoned, rezoned are located outside and inside the city limits at the ridge at Pratt Farms. And whereas the petitioners have initiated the process to annex the portion of the property described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, which remains outside of the city limits into the corporate limits of the City of Prattville. And whereas the petitioner wishes to zone the portion of the property located outside the city limits from, from R three single-family residential. And whereas the petitioner wishes to rezonate the portion of the property located within the city limits from FAR Forest Agriculture and Recreation to R three single-family residential. And whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning, rezoning was held by the Planning, Prattville Planning Commission on January twenty-first, two thousand sixteen. And whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend the zoning of the portion of said property located outside the city limits to be amended as described in attachment A and attachment B from R three single-family residential. And whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend Planning Commission did recommend the rezoning of the portion of said property located inside the city limits be amended as described in attachment A and attachment B from FAR Forest Agriculture and Recreation to R three single-family residential. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for March first, two thousand and sixteen at six PM in the council chambers at City Hall. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, we've been in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand, and this resolution is adopted. Will you read the ordinance part, Council Brown?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama adopted on February tenth, nineteen fifty, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May, nineteen eighty-seven, are hereby amended to reclassify the portion of the property located outside the city limits described in attachment A and displayed in attachment B to R three single-family residential. And that said zoning ordinance and the zoning map are hereby amended to reclassify the portion of the property located inside the city limits described in attachment A and displayed in attachment B from FAR Forest Agriculture and Recreation to R three single-family residential, and that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the city council of the City of Prattville at its public hearing on the first day of March, two thousand and sixteen at six PM, considered said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place, all persons who desired had an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on January twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law.
Have a motion?
So moved, Mr. President.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is a public hearing for the first day of March, two thousand and sixteen at six PM here in this council chambers. That exhausts our agenda for tonight. At this time, we have comments from persons present on any item they wish to speak on, please raise your hand. Mayor, do you have further comments?
No.
Council Striplin?
No.
Council Brown?
No, sir.
Council Starren?
No, sir.
Council White Side?
No, sir.
Council Bowles?
No, sir.
Let me again thank everyone for the work that you do, thank this council, all city employees. There are some things that are before us as, uh, was brought to our attention tonight, they are very difficult, but they are very much needed. Along with that, there are other things that we really have to consider and take care for the future of this city, so I encourage you to continue in your committees as you have been, making sure that you're doing the best job that we all can do. Uh, I also want to call a finance committee meeting for two eight fifteen and nine thirty and then next, wanna follow up on the mayor's bucket list that he had at our last meeting, and if you can, uh, have that list along with some other items I'm sure that we'll need to discuss. With that being said, next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, February sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen at six PM in these chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.